Good morning, everybody. It's 9:00 AM. Let's call the meeting to order here of the Palm Beach County Planning Commission. It is Friday, December 9th. Precious, may we have a roll call, please?
Sarah Pardue.
Present.
John Carr.
Here.
Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Jay Nizberg.
Here.
Penny Pompey.
Here.
Glenn Gromen.
Here.
Spencer Siegel. Lori Vineker.
Here.
Carly Harper Larson.
Here.
Marcia Hayden.
Here.
Angela Van. David Searle. We have Coram.
Thank you so much. Please let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). There's a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have proof of publication?
Yes, Chair, we do.
Thank you so much. Moving on, any postponements from the agenda at this point?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. We do not have any postponements. I just wanted to introduce myself to the Board. My name is Jeff Gagnon. I'm your Deputy Planning Director. Our Planning Director, Kevin Fisher, tapped me in for this one and very happy to serve in that capacity.
I share your pain.[94.31][94.31](laughter) No problem.
Thank you, Chair.
Pleasure. Welcome. Okay, moving along. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion.
And Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed? Great. Consideration of the minutes. A motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Barbara? Second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Comment cards from the public. We do have several. There are five folks or so that want to speak. When I call your name, please come up to the designated podium.
These should be on, if they're related to the agenda item, we do them.
You do want to move them down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're related to the agenda item.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I thought that we were going to do that at this point, but that's fine if you want to move it down there.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's really loud. It would be for comments, for unrelated agenda items if anyone had any comment cards.
Oh, pardon me. Okay. Rookie mistake. Thank you. Okay. Comments by the Chair, just a couple. First off, I just want to wish our colleague Spencer a speedy recovery. He's on a little business today. I also wanted to congratulate our former colleague, apparently, Ed Ferguson, on his election to the school board. I understand he did resign from the Palm Beach County Planning Commission, so, you know, in abstention, I'd like to take an opportunity to wish him well. And in case we don't have an opportunity later, wish everybody present a very happy and healthy holiday season. Other than that, let's move on to the item on the agenda, which is Item 3A, Colony Estates of Boynton. We'll hear first from the applicant, and then the planning staff, and then, at that point, we'll take the comment cards. Okay? Is that better?
That works.
There you go. So let's move forward with the applicant.
Good morning. Joel Machado with WGI for the record, we're representing the applicant. Before you today is the application for Colony Estates at Boynton. It's a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Just a quick introduction to the developer. Developer is not new to the county. They have developed several projects, including, we're happy to present this one today. I want to highlight that the Colony Reserve was one of the first projects, or was the first project in the county to provide the onsite workforce housing units for sale. That was the house project on Lieutenant Road, but you can see that they do have a presence in the county. Before you again today is a small-scale comprehensive plan use amendment to change the land use from low residential LR1 to low residential LR2. Obviously, there are concurrent applications in the zoning process for the rezoning of the parcel from AR to RS and the consequent classic condition used for the introduction of the zero lot line homes and TDRs and workforce housing. Just for a quick background, the property, subject property is 9.78 acres on the north side of Coconut Lane, right between Barwick Road and Military Trail. Also, we want to, just for a larger picture, show that this is an infill development, almost 10 acres in size, and it is just over two miles west of I-95 and just east of Military Trail and almost three and a half miles east of the Florida Turnpike delineating the AGR Current land use on the property is LR1. The proposal is to go to LR2, but as you can see, there's already existing presence for higher densities just to the south of us with LR3s and just west MR5, and it can go as high as HR8 just west of Military Trail. For the concurrent zoning applications, we already have the existing AR zoning and the proposal is to go to RS, which is compatible with the surrounding properties. Just a little background or history, since we've started our application, we have had multiple meetings, correspondence, and presentations to both Cobra and the neighboring properties. Since these conversations started, we have done several iterations or modifications to the plan. We've reduced density. We've reduced one lot. And since a meeting that we had with the neighbors back in August 24th, we have increased retention areas to improve drainage conditions onsite. We have proposed a wall on the west buffer to mitigate for any impacts to the adjacent property on Prestwick. We are also putting a six-foot fence with hedge installation, which is exceeding code requirements on all the other perimeter buffers. The developer has agreed to increase the height of the buffer material at time of planting, also exceeding code requirements, and we have increased open space in the project. We were in front of Cobra for growth management and received recommendation with some modifications, and we had another neighborhood meeting as recent as December 6th with the neighbors from both Montreux and Prestwick Estates. This is just showing the conditions of approval that staff has put on the project, limiting it to 39 units, and we are in agreement with the condition, subject to some modifications from the language that staff has introduced. The proposed request is to go to LR2 with 39 units. Of the 39 units, 10 will come from the TDR program, and 6 will be workforce housing. All six units will be for-sale, single-family product built onsite. That would be a first in the county, as there are other projects that have successfully done town home units. A lot of the projects also send the units offsite. There's a recent approval that you guys did a few months ago, or some time ago, where you had single-family product, but the product went offsite. Developer has always agreed, or it was always the intent to build the units onsite as single-family. It was never switched from townhomes. Staff recommendation is to also do the LR2 39 units, but have 19 TDRs and 8 workforce housing. That far exceeds staff's previous recommendations on other projects. Staff usually puts the 10% for workforce housing, whereas we are proposing 15%. This is coming directly from the code, where it states that the TDR program is supposed to be required unless the applicant is trying to do workforce housing first, so this is how we got to that proposal, and we're following staff's initial recommendations on the project. This slide is just showing the modifications that we're requesting staff to change on the language of the conditions of approval as we move forward to zoning commission and BCC. It is to go on the TDRs instead of 21% to 15%, sorry, for the workforce housing, and then the TDR units from 19 units to 10 transfer development right units. We're asking for your recommendation today and staff modification of conditions of approval to the 15% on workforce housing and 10 TDRs. This is just to show that we have, through the process, found to be compliant with all the policies set forth in the code, and staff agrees. That concludes my presentation. I'll reserve any time for any questions from the Board.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Of course.
And now, may we hear from staff, please?
Good morning. Jerry Lodge of the Planning Division. The amendment before you today is Colony Estates of Boynton. The site is located on the north side of Coconut Lane, about a third of a mile east of South Military Trail. The applicant's requesting to change a future land use designation from low residential one unit per acre to low residential two units per acre on a 9.78 acre site. In addition, the applicant is requesting additional density through the workforce housing program and the transfer development rights in order to develop 39 zero lot line homes at about 3.99 units per acre. Here's an overview of the general area surrounding the site. The site is adjacent to properties with LR1 future land uses to the northwest and east of the site, and on the north and western boundaries adjacent to the site is a Prestwick Estates community built at 0.82 units per acre. South of the site are LR3 future land use designated properties, including the Cocoa Pine Estates community, which is built at 2.11 units per acre, and Montreux built at 2.64 units per acre. Further west are medium residential five unit per acre properties, including the, excuse me, including the Oak Run of Boynton built at three units per acre. At the intersection of Military Trail and Coconut Lane, on the north side is Commercial High with underlying five units per acre, and on the south side is Commercial Low with underlying five units per acre. East of the site is the municipal limits of Boynton Beach, and as shown, you can see that the Coconut Lane corridor is developed below density, single-family neighborhoods with densities generally between two to three units per acre. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use from LR1 to LR2, resulting in a base density increase from 10 to 20 units. Through the concurrent zoning application, the applicant is also requesting the purchase of 10 TDRs, and an additional nine units will be from the workforce housing program density bonus. The workforce housing units are proposed to be onsite for sale zero lot line homes. Staff has reviewed the amendment request and has determined that the amendment is compatible and with adjacent and nearby residential uses and future land use designations. The applicant is proposing zero lot line homes adjacent to single-family homes, which is consistent with the character of the corridor. However, the applicant's proposal is inconsistent with Policy 2.4B of the future land use element, which establishes TDRs as a required method for increasing density, as applicant is only requesting 10 of the 20 available TDRs. By not using the maximum available TDRs and assuming the limited incentive option of the workforce housing program, the amendment as proposed by applicant is minimizing the amount of workforce housing units that would be required. Staff's recommendation regarding TDRs are consistent with previously proposed future land use amendments and density provisions within the plan. However, staff does recognize that the applicant is proposing to develop the required workforce housing units as onsite zero lot line homes, which would be the first development in unincorporated Palm Beach County to offer this type of for-sale workforce housing product. As you can see from this chart, the applicant is proposing 10 TDRs and nine units through a workforce housing program density bonus, resulting in 39 total units, and utilizes the limited incentive option, which equates to 39 units with 15% requirement of workforce housing, otherwise six units. Staff's recommendation is for the applicant to purchase all available TDRs prior to using any workforce housing program density bonuses, and to use the full incentive option, which results to 39 units with 21% requirement of workforce housing, also eight units. Staff is recommending approval with modifications, and those modifications are to limit the maximum density to 39 dwelling units, 21% of units built as workforce housing onsite, and 19 TDRs shall be purchased. The motion before you is to approve with modifications as recommended by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay. Now, I guess we'll take the comment cards from the public. There are a number of people that have asked to speak. There are several here that don't wish to speak, so let's deal with the folks that are present here. Susan Hayes, would you kindly come to Podium 1? And George Kienzie, if you'd kindly step up to Podium 2, and you'd be able to speak after Ms. Hayes.
Good morning to the esteemed members of the Planning Commission. I am Susie Hayes. I am the President of the Prestwick Estates Homeowners Association. I'm speaking on behalf of a few of my neighbors who are here today, and a number of them who have sent you letters because they could not arrange their work schedules to get here. I am also speaking on behalf of several of the unaffiliated residents along Coconut Lane who do not belong to an HOA. I wanted to begin by giving you a bit of a history on Prestwick. In the late 1980s, Prestwick was the first development along Coconut Lane, and there were one or two individual lots and a nursery. That was it. There was nothing even west of Military. We have 50% of our residents living more than 30 years in the neighborhood. Another 25% have lived more than 20 years. And why do we all stay? Because it's an oasis. It's trees and birds, and those are our only amenities. We do not believe that the zoning request is compatible with the neighborhood in Coconut Lane. We're not the only ones. Cobra thought that there were too many homes recommended at 39 and recommended 32, but we think even that is too much. Our two major concerns are density and traffic. For the density, we are one-acre lots, and the neighboring other three neighborhoods are quarter to half-acre lots. If the zoning was changed, the homes would be not on nine acres, because there is a road, a pond, a retention area, and they would be squeezed onto six acres. And that means that 38 or 39 homes would be actually more like six per acre. And that means we would be viewing a wall of concrete from any of our backyards. And on the second floor of these two-story homes, there would be bedroom, bathroom windows, and balconies that would be overlooking even the landscaping buffer that they have put in. Three of the four neighborhoods have only one egress onto Coconut Lane. The traffic has been so bad that we well qualified to put speed humps in, and yet people still drive too fast, and the sidewalk has no division between the road. There's only a four-inch curb, so anybody who misses the road and drives onto the curb is going to run into pedestrians or mailboxes. So we are thinking that the existing zoning with the potential for workforce bonuses and other such things at one unit per acre would give us 10 to 20 neighbors instead of 38, and for those reasons, we request that you help us preserve our quality of life and vote no on the zoning change. Thank you.
And Mr. Kienzie, and before you start, if Susan Boucher could please come to Podium 1? And, Mr. Kienzie?
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
My name is George Kienzie. Of course, I live at Prestwick. I've been in Palm Beach County since 1982. I had a business on Atlantic Avenue for close to 40 years. Kienzie Jewelers. I don't think any of you are my customers, unfortunately, or I would have sold you a Rolex watch, probably. But I saw what happened in Delray, and it's been great. The Village of the Sea has turned into a magnificent little city, and I understand we have to have growth. But being at Prestwick, I think since 1986, it's been a beautiful neighborhood. It's been quiet. I don't want to be redundant with everything that Susie said, but I think, as a businessman, and I've made mistakes in business, and I've had to correct them. Sometimes you eat a sale, and you regret doing certain things. And basically, we're looking for this to stay as an LR1, and I don't think that the surrounding community, meaning us and all the people around us, and you as Commissioners of Palm Beach County, should pay for the mistake of the builder. And what is the mistake of the builder, or the contractor, for lack of a better term? And they're nice people. They're all nice people. I know the Willis family. Everything couldn't be any better. But I do think, and I had mentioned to this to them before, is it possible that you pay too much for the property? And in order to get your profit out of it, now you're asking the Palm Beach Commissioners to go to bat for you. You're going to have to eat their mistake. We're going to have to eat their mistake. So I would appreciate it if you would consider that. And the surrounding properties aren't all like four pieces of property, one an acre. We've got an acre, and there are people on the other side with a couple of acres. Some properties are maybe, you know, 2.5 or something. But the issue is, what's good for us and what's good for Palm Beach County? Now, what difference does it make, and what difference would it make to the county as far as taxes? I don't know. I don't follow it that much. Is it a decision you're making because of the tax rules? And wouldn't it be better to have this property developed with one-acre properties with beautiful homes on that property, keeping in line with what we've done there? And we're going into a very high interest rate area right now. Mortgages are going to be tough to come by. They're hitting 7% on a 30-year. So now, he's going to have to sell these properties and maybe reduce the price. In my opinion, and based on my experience, I've been through several recessions and downturns in business, and the people that still came in and bought what I sold, and believe me, what I sold was the epitome of conspicuous consumption. There's nothing I sold that you needed, but the people that had money still came in and purchased.
Okay, thank you. Don't mean to cut you off, but we do have a three-minute time limit.
Okay.
Apologies.
I would appreciate it if you'd keep it LR1. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have Randy Durst come up to Podium 2 to speak, and Ms. Boucher?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak with you today. My name is Susan Booker, and I live in Prestwick Estates. My husband and I have owned that property for more than 28 years. As you have heard and will hear, we live in Prestwick Estates, a community located on a dead-end street with 21 unique houses. They sit on approximately one acre each, and many of our neighbors have been there a lot longer than we have, and the properties don't go up for sale very often because we like our neighborhood. When we looked to relocate to a traditional neighborhood, we looked for two years, and we finally found a small piece of country where we could be comfortable that was also very close in. Our lot has more than 1,000 plants and trees. Our neighborhood grows many types of native fruit, and in the early mornings and evenings, you can hear the birds, the frogs, the crickets. It feels like you're way out in the country. We have a small drainage pond that's home to many native animals, like raccoons, possums, fox, herons, egrets, sometimes spoonbills, and once in a while, an otter. And there's adjacent property that until two months ago had cows that we could hear on our back patio. We knew that this property would eventually be developed. However, because of the rural nature of the area, with the donkey, goats, and llamas to the east of this property and peacocks around the corner, we were pretty confident that something would be compatible based upon the current land use designation, low residential one unit per acre, just like the LR1 and LR2 properties that surround it. We shouldn't even be here today. When I worked in government for many years, it was my job to read staff analyses and legislation to determine state laws. Well, I read this staff analysis, and the most important paragraphs appear on Page E6 of the report, and it states as follows, and I underline, "The policy requires that density increases be accomplished through the use of TDRs unless an applicant meets the criteria for an amendment, is using workforce housing, or affordable housing program or the proposed density, but not exceeding densities proposed by the neighborhood plan. The applicant is not proposing to use the maximum available TDRs," I think you heard that from your staff, "in order to meet the criteria for an amendment without use of mandatory TDRs. An applicant must both justify and demonstrate a need for a future land use atlas amendment and demonstrate that the current amendment, or land use designation is inappropriate." The applicant has stated that the current designation of LR1 is no longer appropriate or suitable to enable the development of this site with a functional, single-family residential community. However, the current LR1 designation is compatible with the surrounding development and has the potential to achieve higher densities, up to three units an acre with the full use of TDRs and workforce housing density bonus programs. Therefore, the applicant has not met the criteria of the amendment without the use of mandatory TDRs. That is your staff report. Now, today...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but three-minute time limit as well.
I would just urge you to follow policy. The reason why Palm Beach County is in the shape it's in is because we haven't followed policy, and these policies have been put in place for a reason, and your own staff is telling you that the developer has not met the criteria for the amendment. Please keep it LR1. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. May we ask Mr. Jim Knight to come to Podium 1, and Mr. Durst, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you. I'm Randy Durst. I live at 4640 Coconut Lane, directly across the street from this proposed development and where they want to build this monstrosity. I purchased my home a couple of years ago, and when the first time I walked onto this property, I thought I was in heaven. I was sitting there looking at this beautiful one-acre lot with this house on it, quiet neighborhood, beautiful homes nearby, million-dollar range plus. I'm standing there looking at this going, "This is great." And I hear cows, and I turn around, and I have cows across the street. This is incredible. You cannot find this in Palm Beach County. Because people like these developers want to come in and maximize every square inch of the property, and everybody knows that this 3.9 is a joke. By the time they get done putting in their ponds and their roads and their preservation set-aside areas, you're down to six units per acre. Who the heck lives on six units per acre? Any one of you live on six units per acre? No. I don't even think there's a place in Palm Beach County. Well, maybe down in the really bad areas of Lake Worth, where they have 50-foot lots and they're 50 feet deep. Yeah, maybe you'll find that. It's not compatible with our area, our neighborhood. This should not be approved as is. LR1 is in keeping with our neighborhood. It's what makes our neighborhood unique. I wrote a letter. It's in the official record. I hope you all take the time to read it, and in that, you'll see, the traffic is so bad on Coconut Lane, I have had to wait up to three minutes to get out of my driveway. Three minutes, that's the time I'm allowed to talk here. Three minutes, that's a long time to sit in your driveway waiting for traffic to clear so you can actually get out on it. And what happens? People drive up and down the street because it's a shortcut. I've had my mailbox run over twice because of people speeding down here. The amount of traffic is ridiculous at this point, and to put in 39 homes with that much more traffic in it is not going to help the neighborhood. I pray that children that walk on this street are not killed by these drivers. I urge you to maintain the LR1. You know, it's the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chair, Mr., is it Stuart Mener or Meyer?
Taylor.
Sorry, couldn't read the handwriting. No problem. Please go to Podium 2, Ms. Knight.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm a native of Boca Raton. We've seen lots of changes here in Palm Beach County throughout. I represent the Willis Family Trust. They're here, Linda Cozer and Brent Willis. They've owned this property since 1978. According to the staff report, this development is compatible. I think the big question comes to the number of workforce housing units. As I mentioned earlier, this was the first developer anywhere in Palm Beach County to deliver for-sale onsite workforce housing units. They're now proposing to develop for-sale onsite, single-family, zero lot line homes onsite. We all know that the recent bond issue passed requiring, or for a $200 million bond issue, overwhelmingly supported by the citizens of Palm Beach County here. I have a sheet that I would like to hand out, if I could, if it's possible, to the Board members. This is right from the workforce housing program, and it shows you the homes that have been, or the workforce housing units that have been delivered. For the most part, they've been multifamily units, rental units, and there's been approximately 107 or so that have been done as a single-family, but they've been townhomes. And in this time and day where we have people that, not everybody has the same means. Not everybody can afford 600,000... Not everybody can afford $600,000 to $1 million. And if we don't start delivering some of these workforce housing units onsite, we're going to continue to kick the can down the road. As you've seen, many projects come before this board. Majority of the time, everybody's doing either pay and leave or going to develop off-site and not delivering them onsite. I think this is a very important step to take. It would be setting the precedent for someone to actually build them onsite. And based on the staff report and so forth, I would encourage you to move this project forward. Thank you for your time and have a happy holiday, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good morning. My name is Stuart Mailer. I'm the president of the Montro Community Association. We are also directly across from this property. I've been the president for 12 years. I've been living in the community for 15 of the last 12 years, and I'm a delegate of Cobra. I wasn't going to go into the workforce part of this project, but I will. That's not my main point. My main point is that as a delegate of Cobra, which represents 110-plus communities in the area, they have a growth management committee. Their committee met, and they met with the developer. And I want to say that the developer and the builder, they're wonderful people. I agree with the comment made earlier. They are professional, and I believe that they put together a very good product. I have no question about that in my mind. Their history is good and their product is very good. The question comes down to density. Cobra, after deliberating for many, many, many hours, came up with a recommendation. There is a letter, if it has not been yet sent to the developer or to the builder, it is forthcoming, that they recommend a maximum of 32 homes. Now, as you heard from the residents in the community, we really don't want 32 homes either. But Cobra represents, well, over 100,000 residents in the area. It's not just the few people who are here today, and it's not just the people who live in our community. They represent West Boynton. That's what Cobra stands for, Coalition of Boynton West Real Estate Associations. So the situation here is this. I am instrumental in helping get those speed bumps. And about eight, nine years ago, I met with Morale Turk. We found precedence in another area where on a major thoroughfare, you can get speed bumps. The Commissioners voted and they supported us. Whether we have a Republican Commissioner in our district or a Democrat in our district, they've all been very supportive of our needs. And we know that we have a new Commissioner and we are optimistic that she will also be supportive of her constituents. We don't want LR2 because the traffic situation that has been brought up is significant. The gentleman who just spoke earlier, who purchased the home a couple of years ago, purchased it from a gentleman who was hit by a car twice. He was hospitalized and he has since been placed in a facility. We've had a death on Coconut Lane, a hit-and-run many years ago. I don't want to run out of time, so I do want to deal with the workforce issue for a moment. Workforce is great. We're all supportive of it, 100%. However, these are going to be $900,000 homes to $1 million homes, according to the builder and the developer. Because of the cost of goods, it may even go to close to $1 million. The maximum that a workforce home person will pay is somewhere under $200,000. It's not the right community for workforce housing. I just recommend that we stay with the LR1, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay. I do have a couple of other comment cards here from folks that did not wish to speak. Carmen Kouskut, I believe, if I can read the handwriting correctly, is in opposition. So is Mora Taft, also in opposition. Mary Keency, I believe, I guess your husband spoke earlier. Her comment is, "Having lived here for 36 years, we have seen many cow pastures turned into urban sprawl. We are not unhappy with our existing neighborhoods, which have been tastefully done. We do, however, vehemently oppose the LR1 to LR2 because of all the homes that would be jammed into 10 acres. Please vote no." Thank you. I have another one from Audrey Allen. "Coconut Lane does not have the capacity to handle all the extra traffic. It backs up now at the Military Light and at Boynton Creek Elementary. As a 21-year resident who walks daily, I can barely cross the road. Speed bumps didn't slow or stop traffic for one to cross." Thank you. I've also got several letters here that will be entered into the record from, one is from Gregory English. It's rather lengthy, so I'm not going to read it at this point. We also have another letter here from Mildred Maron, Laintier, which will also enter into the record. Another letter from Randy Durst, who spoke earlier. And there's also one from a Jesus Menendez who could not be here. All of these are in opposition, none in support of the project. So we'll enter those into the record along with the comment cards. So at this point, does planning staff and/or the applicant have any questions for each other of the information that has been presented? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to my Commissioners if they have any questions to ask of the staff or applicant, starting with Dagmar.
I am a member of Cobra, and we did feel that this was a really tight squeeze. To try to put 39 homes on 10 acres is tough. Even if it was, you know, basically they're looking at four units to the acre. But if it was a larger site than 10 acres, you would have a little ability to adjust and move things so it would be a little bit more livable. I appreciate the fact that you have an acre. I have 1.4 acres in West Boynton, and it is paradise. But they're not going to do that anymore, folks. The land is too valuable. There's too big of a push on the county for workforce housing. And I'm sorry, I think those days are gone, unless they abandon the project completely, which I don't think they will do. Cobra asks that they keep it to 32 units. I'm asking staff, how could we come to a lower number than the 39? How could we come to a lower number of units and still meet the requirements that the county is putting on the developer?
Well, you can always recommend the, you know, change, modification to the condition to limit it to the 32 units. However, we would need to figure out what the workforce housing percentage would need to be from that. I don't know that we could do that on the fly.
Yeah, okay.
So there would be some modifications to the conditions that would need to be worked out.
The other thing is, you know, I am going to be very interested to see how this developer is actually going to build workforce housing units in a single-family home. Thank you for the sheet that you gave us. I wanted to ask staff again for these numbers, but now we have it in black and white. As far as what the income is supposed to be, and basically, the middle income is 20, 20 to 140% of the median family income. And that comes to about $108,000 to $126,000 a year. And then the sale price is not allowed to be more than $352,000, okay? So there is nothing, there's not even townhomes that are $352,000 right now. So the developer has to compensate for the fact that he needs to build these eight homes at $352,000 or less. What happens when he can't sell these homes at $352,000? What happens? Does he have to put the other houses at a higher price to compensate for the loss in the price of the sale of these workforce housing homes?
We have Maria here, I thought. She can answer that question.
Good morning. I think you're asking whether they need to adjust the price. That is the market that they have to deal with. They need to do whatever they need to do on the market side to address the loss, if any, on the workforce side, the number of units. But I did want, since I'm here, I did want to correct one thing. The numbers that you mentioned are for projects that were approved under the code that was replaced in 2019. For-sale projects have a maximum sales price now at the moderate 2 category of $297,000. I just wanted that on the record.
Okay, good. Yes, that is on our sheet as well. It says low, moderate 1, moderate 2, and then middle. I was trying to go for the highest number because obviously, I don't think anybody would be able to afford buying this kind of a home unless they really had a lot of money in their pocket. But then again, they still qualify for workforce housing. It's all about the income level. 39 is a really big number to put on 10 acres. I'm really having a tough time with this. I'm done.
Let's just move down the line. Glenn?
So I have a couple of questions for staff and a couple for the applicant. My first question is, relates to traffic. And if you could just please confirm, does this, the project as recommended by staff, meet the qualifications of 3.5D?
For the record, I'm Dominic Samis with Traffic. Yes, the proposal meets the requirements.
Another question is, what's the nearest signalized intersection to this location? And what's the LOS for that? My understanding in reading the staff report is that the number of units was actually limited by traffic. Is that in fact the case, the 3.5D?
No, the condition is related to the number of units that they're requesting.
Okay. So the units are not limited in any way by traffic?
Well, they've, the traffic study shows 40, does the analysis at 40 units, and they were requesting 39, so there was no issue with that.
Okay. Because it does say in the staff report that, you know, if you reach a certain number of units, that it might be limited by the LOS at the nearest intersection. What is the nearest intersection and what's the LOS? Is it a D service?
Well, it's hard to explain that, but as shown in the concurrency study, as per the zoning application, an operational analysis was conducted for the intersection of Coconut Lane and Military Trail. And based on the outputs of that analysis, the LOS is D. And all the existing storage lanes would be sufficient to handle the future demands.
Got it. That's what my question about how it met the 3.5D thing. So what I'm hearing about traffic, so I've heard a lot of statements about how this is a, that this existing property is a quiet oasis, birds, tripping birds, and things of that nature on one hand. But on the other hand, it apparently is some sort of traffic nightmare that is almost unbearable. So how do we square that? Any comment on that from staff?
Well, to be frank, based on, I'm sorry, based on policy 3.5, policy 3.5D, and as per the traffic analysis, the estimated volume on the segment, if you're referring to Coconut Lane, it's about 300 vehicles per hour directional. And the segment itself is a two-lane facility, and the capacity for that segment is 880 vehicles per hour directional. So there is enough capacity to handle the-
So there's excess capacity?
Right. As we speak, and as well as the future, even with the inclusion of future developments, there'll still be enough capacity available.
Got it. So, and then another question for staff. So I'm just, this is the staff's map. So the property directly across the street from the subject is a higher density, LR3? Is that correct? Not for traffic, but for the rest of the stuff?
Right. It has LR3 designation, and then I think it's actually built at, if I can read that, 2.6 units per acre.
And the MR5 designation, what's the actual density there?
That is 3.
How many units?
Three units per acre, Oak Run.
30?
Three.
Three, okay, okay. And the, and then the property to the north of Prestwick is also LR2, a higher density. Is that correct?
Right, across the canal.
So I have a couple of questions for the, maybe this is for the applicant. Where are the cows? Are they on the subject? Or, I mean, are they at the golf course? I mean, I heard about the cows. Where are they at?
They are not on the subject side. The subject side used to be and operated and functioned as a nursery. So it was plant material that was here. You obviously have heard from residents that have been here since the 80s, but they also stated there was no development west of Military Trail. I just want to state for the record that changed conditions in the county since the property was developed. You have now MR5, and as I said on my presentation, higher density as far as HR8, just on the other side of Military Trail. So we have to contend and realize that the county has changed since the 80s and the area has changed. We're not doing one-acre lots anymore, and what we are proposing is compatible and actually would serve as a buffer from LR1, LR2 to LR3. So it is consistent with the development on the area.
Right. One more question to you is, or two more questions. One is, you're proposing a wall on the west side of the property, but not anywhere else? Is there some reason for that? Why wouldn't you wrap the whole property with-
We did not, initially, when we started the project, we did not have a wall. We've always had a compatibility buffer around the entire perimeter, west, north, and east, and then a right-of-way buffer on the south along Coconut. After we met with the neighbors of Prestwick, they requested a wall on the west side of the property. We included that. We've pushed the wall to be on the inside edge of the buffer so that all of the planting is on the outside of the wall. So they already have on their properties existing fences. So in the event that their fence is not opaque or it was removed, they will still have plant material. They wouldn't be staring at a wall. So we've been cognizant of that. When we met with them, they only requested a wall on the west. On the second meeting that we had, they asked for a wall in the north. By that time, we had our plans certified, but we've proposed some fence and again, additional plant material. There's already far heavily vegetated site on that area, so. And the homes that are on the Prestwick Estates, structure to structure, are far over 100 feet of separation.
So, and the final question is, so the staff has made a recommendation, which is different from what you're asking for. And my question to you is, is that acceptable to you? Were you somehow looking for us to-
Staff, staff's, our staff's proposal is basically making the developer purchase 21 of the 39 units through the TDR and the workforce housing program.
Right. And so the answer to my question is, is that acceptable to you or not?
We're asking for a recommendation of the modification of the conditions to go with what we have proposed, which is consistent with the letter that staff drafted at the beginning of the project, that it was for 10 TDRs and six workforce housing. We've had that since the beginning of time. It was only until the time that the staff report was drafted or that the modifications changed.
Okay. No further questions for the applicant. The staff want to comment on that semi-response to my question?
Maria can address the letter that he's speaking about.
Yes, and I'm sorry that it's always a complicated situation with workforce, but the situation is this. We get requests, multiple requests every day for calculations. What if I purchased a piece of property? And what if it had this land use? And what if I did this? So we respond to those scenarios all day long. When one of those situations moves into the amendment realm, it's a different story. Then we apply the policies that are in the plan that require the mandatory use of the TDRs. We apply the full incentive assumptions because they are seeking to maximize their density. And based on that, we arrive at the assessment that's in here. So we can, you know, we deal with hypotheticals all day long, but when it comes to the amendment, we apply the policies that are in the plan.
Yeah, that's an excellent explanation. Completely understand that.
And if I could add, the letter does have a disclaimer which states those facts that Maria mentioned, that once there's an amendment in process, there are these additional policies that the staff recommends.
Got it.
And it should be, that's fine. We understand that's the process. It's just, should be the same policy or should have similar calculations because when we start a project, we go off of that letter. And it just, it simply wouldn't be feasible for us to do 20, purchase 21 units.
All right, no further questions for me.
Thank you. Randy?
I think this probably goes to Maria as well, and maybe to the developer. So we have this sheet that was handed out by the developer. Thank you. Who determines the income category? You've got low, moderate, 1, moderate 2, and middle. How do you know what is going to be available for sale at what price?
All right. The workforce housing program requires that the units be evenly spread, the workforce units be evenly spread among the applicable categories. Again, this project-
being approved under what we are calling the new code that was approved in 2019 would not have access to the middle income category, only the lower three, the low, the mod one, and the mod two. So projects coming in would be required to spread their workforce housing units evenly across those three, starting from the top. So if there's an extra unit, it would be in the highest category. That said, if the county commission chooses to request or direct through a condition of approval, a different distribution, then obviously we would abide by that. And that does happen from time to time.
So when Dagmar said that it would be 352,000, in fact, it would be 297,000 would be the highest price that could be charged for the unit. Is there, does the developer, is the developer allowed to reduce square footages in order to be able to meet that price point?
All right. There is no requirement that the units be identical in size. There are some minimum requirements for for-sale units. They must include appliances. They must have a minimum of two bedrooms and the bedrooms must be a minimum of 100 square feet each. So there are some requirements for for-sale units, but overall square footage is not one of them. They need to be compatible and comparable in appearance on the outside. The inside finishes can be different.
Okay. Thank you.
To Ms. Mape's point, as it was stated by one of the residents, that is a cost of twin business and the developer understands that of the six units that we are proposing to be in the workforce housing program, four of the units would be in the 180-plus range and two units would be $240,000. And that would be the cost and the developer is eating that cost. The units, as Maria just stated, would have all the amenities and the architectural appearance equal to the market rate units. They'll just be in a different footprint, but it will comply with the code.
So you say six units. What about, so that means the other four are in moderate two? Is that what you're saying? Because you said 10 units.
No, no. 10 units are being purchased through the TDR program, six in the workforce housing. Of the six, four, I believe, would be in the lower income category and two in the moderate.
Okay, thank you.
John, questions?
Yes, thank you. Most of mine have been answered, but I have one question. I believe it's going to be for staff. So in your, the conclusion, it says about the TDRs that are required, are they not meeting the requirement or are you just suggesting?
So there's, the policy 2.4B requires that TDRs are the mandatory method of increasing density. And on the site, they could go up to 20 TDRs, of which they are only requesting 10. So staff's recommendation is always to utilize the maximum available TDRs and then go to workforce housing bonus. But in this situation, because it's a low residential request, they can achieve that number of 39 units through just TDRs with the land use amendment.
Perfect. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
Hi, thank you. To the applicant, please. On the area where you did not have the wall, you talk about a fence that'll be on top of a berm, I would expect?
The fences also would be set back to be on the inside edge of the buffer. So 100% of the planting is on the outside of the fence.
What height do you expect to achieve with whatever setback fence?
So the intent, even though there is significant mature vegetation on that buffer, the intent is to have a six-foot fence with a four-foot hedge planted at time of installation for the hedge to be maintained at eight feet so that it offers a full screen underneath the canopy of the shade trees and the shrubbery. So it would be a complete opaque screen to the adjacent neighborhood.
Are there shade trees existing now?
There are existing shade trees. There is a number of Australian pines that would have to be removed as part of the development and hence why the applicant has agreed to replace the trees or the trees to be planted on the buffer at higher than minimum standards as required by the code.
Thank you. In addition, we hear some reference, and I'm very sensitive to the issue of buildable acres versus 9-point-plus acre site. On how many acres will your structures actually be placed?
Don't have all the exact numbers, but of the 9.78 acres, we have a retention pond right on the center of the site that is collecting not only our drainage, but existing historical sheet flow drainage from adjacent properties. And we're following that to the positive outfall.
And how large?
It's a 1.11 acre tract of land that's reserved for the retention area. Of that, we have street cross-sections that have to meet the county's standards and then we have the developer lots. But we have a minimum 50-foot lots. So we far exceed our property development regulations set forth by zoning on width and depth of the lots. We're not in the minimums.
Thank you. And another issue to that, I understand, and thank you, Ms. Bello, it's always a pleasure to hear your clarity on these issues. I understand that the workforce housing units may be smaller, but that the appearance would be compatible. What about the location of those units among the either 32 to 39 units? Location in terms of, are they grouped? Are they interspersed? How do you, as a developer, envision that?
So the way this site was laid out, it does have a reservation because of the depth of the lots. And since those homes would have a little bit of a smaller footprint to be located on the southwest corner. So they will be grouped, but they would not have an aesthetic appearance different from anything else on the neighborhood. Once you're driving on it, it's just those lots tend to be, tend to be smaller because we had to provide the 15-foot right-of-way buffer along Coconut and that's where those units would be. They'll be immediately adjacent to the recreation area and fronting the retention pond.
Thank you. And one more thing, please. In terms of maintenance of this community, and perhaps this goes to staff or to Ms. Bello, how is that handled in relation to workforce housing units versus market units? Any maintenance costs associated?
The workforce housing program doesn't dictate what happens with HOA fees and things like that. However, for for-sale units, the Housing and Economic Development Department of the county, which is the one that certifies applicants as eligible for purchase of units, obviously does take into account HOA fees, whatever they may be, as part of the certification of the eligibility of the individual. So it's considered, but not in terms of requiring something to be different or capped or anything like that.
Thank you. So when we heard at a prior meeting, and it might have been at a BCC meeting where I heard it or hear, that perhaps some of that money that has been, we always ask, where does the INLU money reside? Might that be used as assistance for people who might not be able to pay the required HOA fee?
My understanding is that under the ordinance that was adopted by the board that directs the use of the INLU funds, that money only is used for down payment assistance. But that is administered by the Housing and Economic Development. I can follow up and make sure that there's nothing in there about supplementing HOA fees.
Thank you, because we don't really have a whole lot of experience in this realm. It's sort of new territory and I have heard people say, well, if you go into a community, thank you, if you go into a community with eight, nine, 100,000-dollar, million-dollar homes and there is a maintenance associated with that community and you have homes being purchased at under $300,000, where is the reasonable apportionment of community fees? And I don't know whether that has been addressed in real terms.
And some communities will, for that reason, put the workforce units in a separate pod that may not have access to all of the same amenities in order to keep the HOA fee down.
Exactly. But this is a smaller community. So we're talking about X number of buildable acres. You have a one-acre plus retention area pond. You have buffers. You have all of that. So you have everything, you know, fairly compressed and I'm sensitive to that. So, you know, I, please.
The developer, as the units would be limited or, you know, they'll have the workforce housing sort of blanket over them. It can be worked out so that those lots have a lower HOA maintenance fee. That can be worked out into the documents at time of purchase. The developer can agree to that when that comes to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
My question is to the applicant. So just from my understanding, you're not agreeable with staff's recommendation. Is that correct?
The project would not be feasible if we had to provide 19, purchase 19 TDRs and provide eight workforce housing units.
Okay. And then to staff, in your report, you said at the January 2023 BCC workshop, staff will present for board direction policy actions as part of a larger density discussion. So why didn't we wait to bring this project after that discussion?
So the applicant wanted to move forward ahead with this application. So it was just based on the timing of the concurrent zoning application was certified for public hearing and, you know, the applicant wanted to move forward on the timeline.
Let's go to the other end. Jay, any questions?
Thank you, Vice Charles. My questions have been answered unless the applicant can give us some idea of what the HOA numbers are at this point?
I'm not sure that those numbers have been drafted at this point. Just going back to Ms. Hayden's comment about timing with the application has been in the process. We have to continue along with that process. And I believe it is on the staff report where staff acknowledges that lower-density projects like this, this is not a 200-unit project where if you lose or if you have to purchase more units, there's areas to build it. The way the code is written is just almost penalizing the developer for going with the lower density. That's why we're requesting reduction. And it's not a reduction. Staff is normally consistent with a 10% workforce housing regulation where we're proposing 15%. It's just when you're working with lower numbers that the math doesn't look as pretty.
I just wanted to stay with that one question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Sarah?
Most of my questions have also been answered and I understand you have a concurrent zoning application. I was just curious if staff or the applicant has the proposed site plan? Just, I've noticed a lot of questions by the fellow commissioners regarding the wall and the adjacent neighbors. And I was just curious if we could see that?
Sure, we could pull that up. Yeah, I believe it was in the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, yes. And could you just show your proposed workforce housing on this proposed application?
So it would be on the southwest corners, the lots west of the recreation all the way to the buffer.
Correct. And I understand you're opposed to purchasing more TDRs. However, can I confirm with staff that if no more were purchased with the 10 they did, they're only, they're limited to 20 dwelling units at the current?
I believe, I can address that. I think they can achieve 30 units if they stay at LR1, you're asking? Yeah, they can achieve potentially 30.
Stay at LR1, they wouldn't purchase more TDRs and then they would be eligible for 30.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Based on their 10 acres today at LR1, they could achieve the 10 units, 10 more through TDRs and 10 more through workforce housing density bonus potentially.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, boy. We have turnpikes and we have highways and we have boulevards and avenues and roads and we have lanes. And this is a lane. It is very, very small. And there is a Walmart at the corner of that military and Coconut Lane. I go there often. It's a very nice neighborhood Walmart, very, very busy. That lane is very, very small. I feel the, for the residents there, I see that this is a tremendous amount of density to put there. I think it's too much. I see the MR5 here that's got three units per acre. The LR3 across has 2.6 units per acre. I can't see this more than three units per acre. I can't see it more than 30 units. My question is, if you had 30 units, and what if, can we suggest that the developer be allowed to use the middle income category to sell? Would that be possible and could this work out feasibly?
That's too many numbers to be drafted on a fly, but the developer just says it simply wouldn't work. It could not be feasible. Not with today's cost of materials, labor, and everything else that's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Kylie?
I have to say, being the last one before Chair gives the comments, kind of puts me at an interesting juxtaposition. Being a business owner, being a landowner, wanting to have a legacy, but also the neighbors and their zeal to have a consistency of community. And that's really what I'm hearing, is it's not just lifestyle, it's the concept of community, which is defined in our county very, very lovingly. And as we look at the application, I do have a couple of key questions for the applicant. If we denied your proposal monetarily to go to a higher TDR and two more, two more workforce housing units, keeping a consistency of 39, that number hasn't changed. You're telling me that that makes it infeasible. Is that correct? That would be a 21% workforce housing, 19 TDRs. It makes the project infeasible.
19 TDRs and eight workforce housing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Staff, in your report, you stated those numbers, plus in your presentation, you stated those numbers. As former Representative Bueker so eloquently put it, "We have policies in place to maintain consistency." Consistency maintains community. If we established the potential precedent to deviate from this policy, what could we see come before us with changes?
Well, as an advisory board, you all are able to recommend whatever you see fit. And then as far as, are you kind of getting at the point of precedent or, okay, so with legislative decisions and I can have Darren?
Well, are we, I don't think we're violating the policy, are we? By permitting this project as recommended by staff, right?
But if we deviated, this is a FLUA.
I don't think we're deviating. The policy requires the use of TDRs to maximize the density on the property and that's what staff's recommending. That's not deviation, that's following the policy.
But if we chose different numbers in any?
So you're saying going less than the maximum? I mean, that's, again, that's a legislative decision of the board. You know, I think we've seen it. The developers come in all the time and ask for less and it's a policy decision on whether or not a board is going to grant that or deny it, so. or not a board is going to grant that or deny it, so. To predict what would come, I don't think that's possible.
Okay. Based on the applications that we have forthcoming, January, February, and we also have a meeting to discuss different amendments coming up, how could you foresee those applications changing, punt passing to see? If we, if we made decision here, there would be no way that applications in the future would not be affected, correct? Because they would wait to see and use that.
Right, so the applicant can always use that as a justification for their requests. However, you know, each amendment the board considers on its own merits. So as Darren mentioned, it's a legislative decision, it's a policy decision by the board. And we have seen recently where the board has gone more towards the, you know, the 50% of TDRs instead of full. We have, we have seen that, which is why we are going to bring up in our January Board Workshop some considerations for that TDR policy.
And understand that the discussion in January is just a workshop. The code is not going to be changing after that. If there's, if the board directs staff to change code, there'll be, there'll be, I would imagine, a considerable amount of time between that direction and the adoption of the new code. And I would imagine during that period of time, the developers are not going to necessarily want to wait, they're going to pursue their applications.
Thank you all very much.
If I may, to Ms. Larson's comment, just want to say that you're not deviating from the code, nor is staff. There is a full incentive option, and there's a limited incentive option. We're reaching the same numbers, just utilizing different math for the feasibility of the project. While we're still providing, we'll be the first to provide single-family what is so desired by the board, not only this board, but County Commissioner Board, onsite product, making that number work, that is pretty hard. And it would not be the first. You're not setting a precedent. It was not long ago that you had an application before you where different numbers were considered with the same result, and it was approved. So you're not setting a precedent, nor are we. So I just want to make sure that that is clear on the record. And it's not incompatible, we're not maxing out everything, we're not asking for, not that it's pertinent to this board, but on the zoning application, there's no deviations, waivers, variances, nothing is being requested as part of this application. We're cognizant of the area around us, hence why we are producing the product that we have. We're not, and we said, we stated at the beginning, we've known that this is the product that we want to do on this project since the beginning of time. We never switched it around, it was like, oh, we started with townhomes at 45 units an acre, and we are now that, no, no. This has been the plan since day one, and since day one, we've actually lost a unit. And there may be the potential, after, again, certification, you still have this application, where we may lose another unit, we may end up with 38 units. And even if we go down to 38 units, we are not going to be changing our TDR obligation nor our workforce housing obligation. We would keep that at 38 units. So I just want to make sure and state that for the record before the final decision is made.
Thank you.
Of course.
I just had one quick question for you, since you brought it up. When was day one? When did you guys purchase this property?
It's not closed. It's a contract purchase agreement.
Okay.
From between the Willis family and the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I have another question, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I have two questions, and they're really for Maria. This down payment assistance program, do these people that qualify, do they have to pay that down pay, down payment assistance back?
I believe it depends on whether they sell the house while it's still in the affordability period, which is 15 years.
Okay, so if they keep the house for 15 years, they don't have to pay back the money that the county is going to give them towards the down payment on this house?
I am not 100% sure about that, so I'll follow up on that as well. Again, it's administered by Housing and Economic Development, so it's out of our realm, but I will find out and will confirm for you.
Okay, and my second question is, my husband and I are both retired, and just say, we both bring, the two of us together, we bring in $60,000 a year in social security and pensions and stuff like that. Do I qualify to purchase one of these workforce housing homes?
Yes.
Thank you.
It depends, though, there are, excuse me, there are limitations with regard to assets that the Housing and Economic Development Department considers, so income is a major consideration, but if you have, you know, a zillion dollars.
If I have a lot of money in the bank, you're going to move on.
Or other assets.
Yeah.
So real quick for the applicant. I'm trying to get my arms wrapped around the number of units and the number of lots. And I'm hearing commentary about that the market rate units should sell about between 900,000 and a million. Is that, is that the number? Is that number, are those numbers right?
Yes.
So one of the things I don't understand is, this is a pretty nice area, and maybe Ms. Vindiker travels it often, maybe she could weigh in on this after I finish my question is, so I'm sort of in this business, and my question to you is, why wouldn't you do 30 lots? And instead of building homes for a million two, you build them for a million seven or two million? It certainly, did you guys do a market study, or you just, this is what you want to do? Or how did you come to that understanding of what you wanted to do? It seems like you're going through a lot of trouble. I have a lot of issues with what you're trying to do. And, you know, the policy is the policy, 2.4 has got its policy scenario. It seems like we're trying to put 50 pounds in a five-pound bag when you could put five pounds in a five-pound bag and still make the same amount of money. Is there, was there a market study done?
The developer certainly draws their numbers. I'm not going to speak to that, but there's just no way from a comparison. We're not introducing a new product to the area. Serial lot lines already exist. They exist just across the street. Montrose is a serial lot line community, Oak Run is a serial lot line community. There are serial lot line products in the vicinity.
There are, but the adjacent properties are large, one-acre or half-acre.
Correct, and hence where you're going.
Why not do that and build a more expensive product? Isn't the same?
We wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to put one-acre lots and sell them over a million dollars when there are communities. We're comparable with the market in the area. We're comparable to the 900, 800, $1 million properties that have been sold in Montrose. We're comparable to the properties in Oak Run, and we just, would be just under the 1.2, 1.3 million dollar properties that may have been close, although not often, as was stated by the residents on the Preswick Estates that have over an acre of land. So we're trying to be with the market in the area. It is an infill development area, it's east of Military Trail. It's just over one-acre lots, east of Military Trail, you don't see that.
And the only reason you didn't do like walls around the entirety of the properties? Because you just sort of talked to them, to the neighbors, about?
Keep in mind, keep in mind, the zoning code introduces a wall and an incompatibility buffer, a type, two-type-three incompatibility buffer, when we have commercial properties or commercial uses adjacent to residential.
So that's where the MR5 comes in?
Not, we're not doing anything MR5.
No, but you're adjacent to it, aren't you?
No.
No?
No. So we are compatible. It's single-family residential adjacent to single-family residential. We're subject to an eight-foot compatibility buffer around our property. And not only are we agreeing to increase and do things about?
No, I understand, I've just, I've never seen a community where it has, with four sides that has one wall. It seems, it seems strange to me.
That's at the request of the neighbors. The other properties, the other, the other buffers would have, still be secure for everything, it's just not what wall product.
Okay, that's, that, appreciate your time, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me answer the question.
One quick question to follow up what I said earlier. Is your, you have not closed on this property yet?
Correct.
When do you anticipate closing on this property? Is it conditional to this board's discussions as well as the BCC?
It's conditional on site plan approval. So it'll be after BCC.
Understood, thank you. Okay, at that point.
Excuse me, one more question. I'm.
Another question down here?
One more question. If this gets turned down, is it possible, because this is an infill site, somebody can come in and put in townhomes or condos or apartments?
Yes.
On this 10 acres?
Yes, that could always be requested, of course.
Last question, Jay? Sure. Okay, okay.
Yeah, just a very good point, and my sincere understanding of what Palm Beach County was, but we are grappling daily with what is today in Palm Beach County, trying to be sensitive to the issues, the political initiatives, the socioeconomic initiatives. We struggle with this, and ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners. So the landscape has changed, and the question is, how do we best compromise, for lack of a better word, with all of these issues we've discussed today? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that'll conclude the questions. Now I'll just open it up to comments and discussion amongst the board here. Let's start at the other end with Jay.
Yeah, I'm good with the conversation and prepared to vote, Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, don't we need to have a motion first before we discuss?
Do we need a motion at this point?
Yeah. Well, I'll move, I'll move for approval subject to staff's recommendations for purposes of discussion.
There, okay.
Have a second.
We, hold on.
In that motion for purposes of discussion?
No, there is no motion for purposes of discussion. There's a motion or there is not a motion, so.
There's a motion.
Okay, so if that's the motion that you want to vote, everybody to vote on, then that's the motion to be made.
So moved.
Vice Commissioner Gromon, second?
I'll second the motion.
Vice Commissioner Vindiker, okay, now, discussion?
Oh, I thought you were starting on the other end.
Well, I'd like to start with Mr. Gromon, since he made the motion.
So my feeling on this is that staff has done its usual excellent job on making a presentation. There is obviously, there are obviously policy considerations which are laid out clearly in the ULDC, which is why the staff has made its recommendation subject to the modifications it's set forth. So my feeling is if the, if the BCC wants to change that or do something different, that will be up to them, which is sort of always the case. But I think the staff's recommendation is appropriate, and I think it's been well thought out and well laid out. I think that the documentation contained in the staff report, including the traffic analysis, is correct as well. There's no traffic issue. The issue is really the conformity with, the issues are really the conformity with the policy considerations concerning the use of TDRs versus the use of workforce housing, which I think is right on the money. And again, the staff's responsibility is set forth and to lay out their analysis based on what the policy is, not what it should be, or not what the BCC decides to do. So that's the basis for my motion.
Thank you. Now let me start at the other end, please.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just want to take exception to Commissioner's comment about traffic. I think traffic, even though the numbers speak to what they are, traffic is always a subject of timing. And while, you know, one can always average, you know, 24 hours in a day, I find that at different points in time, traffic could be an issue, it could be a significant issue. That was the only comment I wanted to make in reference to Commissioner's point.
Okay, thank you very much. Sarah? Lori?
Yes, I'll comment. I don't see a smooth transition here from the adjacent properties and with the densities. This, the number of units appears to be way too much for this. But staff did an excellent job. Many times I go along with staff's recommendations because they're excellent, well thought out, they're unbelievable. But you're dealing with, you're doing what you can with what you have. And the other thing is that if we deny this application, if we are against it, then, then yes, like they say, be careful what you wish for, because you might get something else. Because if this doesn't go here, then yes, maybe apartments or even higher density can be built there, possibly in the future. But I have to deal with the application I have now here, and I, by the time it gets to the Board of County Commissioners, when they make their decision, it may not look like what we're voting on here at all today. So I have to do what I think is right for the adjacent homeowners and for the area. It's, I can't go along with the 39 units and the, even the way it's set out with staff, so I'm going to be voting against this.
Kylie?
I echo what Lori just said, and the fact that this is an infill site. There's what I consider to be significant anchorage for an infill site on a very compressed lane. My former, or the earlier commissioner said it best. Averages tell us only what we want to know numerically, and we cannot infer anything beyond an average. However, you have outliers. And I do want to stress that there is a community with overwhelming support on both sides of the road here. There are different land use allowances, contiguous. And this is a bit of an odd situation. But before us, the staff has presented something that would keep us consistent with an established policy. And if we deny, we may see something that this community will be not only opposed to, but outraged by. The second thing that I have to say here is that this particular policy, we have many more infill sites in and around this area. And there are developers that are waiting with bated breath on it. Consistency, as much as we do not want to be involved sometimes, right now, at this moment, I wish I wasn't here to make a vote on this, okay? But consistency with policy has foresight until we are given different direction. And if we don't stay consistent, we will establish an issue that will continue to rear its ugly head.
Daymar? Any comments? I'll come back.
He had a comment at the, yeah, Jay?
I'll go then. I agree with Commissioner Gromon. I think the staff did a great job of giving us an option, an opt-out, actually. And if I understand the applicant correctly, if we vote in favor of the commissioner's motion, we end up in the same place. Whether you vote against it, against any motion, or any applicant request, or this particular motion, we're in the same place. So I think, I think the motion puts us in a win-win for everybody on this panel. Hopefully, the applicant will be able to come back with some kind of compromise. But I hear him saying at the moment, he can't. So I don't think that's our issue, that's his issue, and I'll be in favor of this motion.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I wanted to address that point and some of the other comments that were made. The other commissioners have, the last two comments are exactly right, and that is, it's pretty clear that the applicant is not agreeable, not agreeable with staff's recommendation. So if we vote for staff's recommendation, we're voting for the consistency of following the county's policy as opposed to voting no, just because we don't, we don't like something. I don't like the unit count either. I don't like the unit count either, to be honest with you. However, I do like the staff's consistency in laying out their policy. And that's why, that's why I'm in support of the motion. And then, one other thing, one other comment to talk about traffic, okay? You know, people's perspective on traffic is different across the board. The traffic analysis, traffic analysis is a science. It follows rules. The methodology may not be agreeable, but the rules are consistent. And the bottom line is that you may think that, so, to the traffic engineer, who looked at the traffic study, indicated that there was capacity and that it met the test of 3.5D. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here. So, just keep that under advisement. There's, this is not a quasi-judicial body where substantial competent testimony is important, where you can sort of qualify what people are saying. What sometimes the neighbor's commentary is, could be consistent with substantial competent testimony, what they see and what they hear and what they feel. But the traffic study is based on science, traffic counts, and an awful lot of money the county spends on doing that type of thing. So, we shouldn't just sort of throw it on the trash heap. There's different perspectives and I agree that, you know, there could be some odd scenario where the measurements and the AMPM peaks and whatnot don't really truly account for what the traffic is. That happens all the time. But we have to have some level of measurement. And that's what the traffic studies are all about. So, I thank you for your, thank you for your time.
I'd like to respond with...oh, I'll wait for Barbara.
Barbara?
Well, if you're responding just to that point, please, and then I, may I after that?
Okay.
I just wanted to say to Commissioner Gromen, stuff happens, okay? I live, I happen to live across the intercoastal from Mar-a-Lago. In 2016, the road of A1A was completely blocked by one of these unforeseen circumstances that nobody could control. I live on water. I cross the street from water. I had unbelievable traffic that was completely inconsistent with science, as you're discussing, because of circumstances unbeknownst to anybody in 2016. And I just, my empathy goes out to the staff because they work with numbers. They work with science. They work with studies and everything else. All I'm trying to point out, and I think it's important for us to take under consideration, is stuff happens.
Couldn't agree more.
Things change.
Couldn't agree more.
Barbara?
Thank you. Boy, does stuff happen.
Consistently.
I'm thinking back, yeah. I think staff understands how much I respect their work and, again, beautifully laid out. On the other hand, the other thing that should not be thrown on the ash heap is our discretionary opinion. We're an advisory board. We are not quasi-judicial. I agree with that. However, for those of you who go to BCC meetings or read their agendas, our votes, our comments are part of what comes before those seven Commissioners who will make the final decision. And I take that responsibility seriously. If I'm not here to give some discretionary input based upon my judgment, then why the heck am I here? We don't need to be here as a planning commission if everything is going to be, okay, the policy as of this moment states this. Staff has done an excellent job. They have a responsibility to present that policy and tell the applicant that you toe the line on that. But we are advisory. We have discretion. And that is noted by those seven county Commissioners. I take that seriously. Therefore, I don't know, Mr. County Attorney, in the past, we have allowed substitute motions. Or do we just need to deny this and then come up with a second motion? Because I'm a firm believer in compromise and understanding what could come down the road, which might be more onerous to the surrounding communities, yet being sensitive to the county's imperative to provide some workforce housing units for sale. In that sense, this is really very important. So, substitute motion, we have to vote this.
You can make a substitute motion so long as it's seconded. Then it would be voted on. And if the motion fails, then we could take up the original motion.
Thank you. If I might, Mr. Vice Chair, provide a substitute motion?
Can you hold on that thought for just a minute? Let us go to the rest of the Commissioners, see if they had any comments before you make the most substitute motion. Would you be okay with that? We haven't heard from John and we haven't heard from Penny and...
Certainly.
If they have any comments.
Yeah, I'll keep this brief, but I guess the biggest thing here is I'm not, you know, it's disappointing that we can't come to an agreement on the workforce housing. Hopefully, that there can be some considerations to make that happen. I do hear the, you know, the homeowners in the surrounding areas' concerns. But we do have to have this on its own merits and when we look at it. But I think, you know, I'm going to support this motion. However, I would hope that we can come to an agreement on the workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now, Commissioner Roth, if you have a substitute motion you'd like to offer?
Thank you. I would like to offer a substitute motion. And that is to provide a maximum of 32 dwelling units, six onsite workforce housing units. And the TDRs, I would leave to Maria Bello and staff, you know, to tell me the best way to do that number. But I, I want to retain the ability for onsite for-sale workforce housing units. And I believe the number six in a maximum total units of 32 would work. That is my substitute motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, for the County Attorney, doesn't the Commissioner have to withdraw his?
No.
He does not.
We can have...
So, we can have two motions on the floor at one time?
Have to consider them.
Right, so now, the substitute motion would be the motion that's, would be on the floor at the moment and the original motion is kind of in reserve.
But this motion needs a second.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order before the second. So, the substitute motion does not address the scenario involving the differential of the TDRs and how they're used. It ignores that. So, it ignores part of the application.
Well, it's not ignore, it's TBD. The TDR is TBD. In other words, she's deferring to staff to come back with the correct calculation.
Of workforce housing, that's what the motion said, but not the allocation of the TDRs.
I very specifically included six onsite workforce housing units, but the TDRs, I would never ignore TDRs, but I leave that to...
So, that's an easy calculation. So, the LR2 gets them to 20 base units. So, then, if you're trying to do 32 units, staff's recommendation would be 12 TDRs in order to utilize all available.
If my fellow Commissioners would be more comfortable, I could add that and it would be a maximum of 32 units, eight onsite workforce housing units and 12...
No, they would have to all be...
Six, 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 six. I'm reading up there to just, you know, come down. Forgive me, six workforce housing onsite and 12 TDRs to be purchased. And that is the motion which needs a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay.
Second.
I'll lead the discussion. Let me just get my comments in here for a second here.
Who was the second? Who was the second?
Commissioner Roth. So, we've already heard from the applicant that 32 doesn't fly.
Right.
It's...
With apologies, I believe that was the 30 when we were talking about 10, 10, and 10. Was that on the 30 or was it...
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
I thought I had 32.
It was 32.
I, and I respect everyone's opinions and everybody has an opinion and entitlement to it and such. I also don't want to make a deal for anybody. It's their, it's the applicant's, you know, opportunity and to bring their proposal to us. It is staff's excellent work, as always, to dissect that and give us the whys and the wherefores of what can and can't be done. I don't feel that it is my, I'm not comfortable going back and rewriting the deal, so to speak. So, for that reason, with all the greatest respect, I would probably vote against your motion just because I don't want to engage in the business of the business, so to speak. I think the initial pending motion, which talks about, you know, the applicant's position and then the staff's counterposition, gets us to the same point.
Right.
And then, it's going to have to be up to the parties to go back to the table to hash it out and figure out what they want to do if a deal, for lack of a better phrase, if a compromise can be achieved. You know, I am very, very sensitive to traffic issues. I have my own along Jog Road. I live in Meisner Preserve. I've had my comings and goings with the traffic department. I'm not a big fan of traffic counts. I understand what they do, but they don't take the whole picture into account. So, I'm very, very sensitive to traffic issues. I'm also very sensitive to lifestyle issues of that community. You know, you have a sec, if you have a, you know, a second-story home coming up behind you, a six-foot fence isn't going to cut it. You know, you need 12 to 13 feet to keep line of sight out of somebody's bedroom into your backyard. So, I get all of that. And sometimes, just because something meets the criteria doesn't mean that it's right. So, that's my two cents from a common standpoint. I would like to call the question on the second motion. And then, I think we should, once that's resolved, we should go back.
Is there room for more discussion, Mr. Chair, in the second?
I wanted to call the question as well. I request the Chair call the question on the second.
I would like to call the question on the second motion. And then, we have discussion on the original motion?
I'd like to request that the Commissioner Roth withdraw her motion.
That's entirely up to Commissioner Roth.
Respectfully, let's take a vote on the substitute motion and then we can go back to the original motion. But thanks for the suggestion, but no.
With that, having said that, may, let's, Precious, may we have a roll call on the substitute motion, please?
John Carr?
No.
Barbara Roth?
Yes.
Lori Vineker?
Yes.
Penny Pompey?
No.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Glenn Gromen?
No.
Sarah Pardue?
No.
Kylie Harper Larson?
No.
Marcia Hayden?
No.
Rick Stopek?
No.
Jay Nisberg?
No.
Motion doesn't pass.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's further discussion, I'd like to call the question on the original motion made by Commissioner Gromen.
And can we just clarify, the original motion was approval subject to staff's recommendations?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct, with no other language, correct?
Right.
Okay, and that was seconded by?
I'll second it.
Who did that?
I think Lori did, yeah.
Lori did second the original one, okay.
I seconded it.
So, having said that, call the question, roll call, Precious, please.
John Carr?
Yes.
Barbara Roth?
No.
Lori Vineker?
No.
Penny Pompey?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
No.
Glenn Gromen?
Yes.
Sarah Pardue?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
Jay Nisberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, 8 to 3.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. I don't see any other agenda items under public hearing, so we'll move now to just comments from the Commission members. Any comments in front of my fellow Commissioners?
I would like to make a comment. We took almost two hours on one project. God forbid if we had four today.
It would be a long day.
But I just want to let you know that if Mr. Ferguson was our chairman still and if Mr. Siegel was here, we would all have been reprimanded for talking so much. So, I hope you enjoyed all the conversation today. But remember, when our chair comes back, it probably won't happen again. Thank you.
I'm not sure quite how to take that, but having said that...
I think better.
Okay, you know, I, you know, I'll just quasi-respond to that. I'm a big believer, you know, we're all here voluntarily. We have something to say. The good people in the audience have something to say. I think it's incumbent upon us to listen. It's incumbent upon them to listen to what we have to say. I don't like to cut people off. If the discussion is substantive and it's going in the right direction and it's not stalling, I didn't hear a lot of duplicative comments today. So, having said that, I'll take it for what it is.
It's a compliment.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Vice Chair for standing in. I think you did an absolutely excellent job.
Appreciate it.
I think the more you put on the record and the more you speak about certain things. Everything was very positive. Everything was very sort of collegial, so I think that all worked out. And finally, I wanted to thank staff for, on an annual basis, what a fantastic job that they do. I watch you, I watch the reruns of BCC meetings, you know, because I have, I do nothing else, you know. I don't have much excitement going on in my life, so I watch the BCC hearings and whatnot. And you do an excellent job and you're actually one of the best staffs, in my opinion, perhaps in the country. So, it's really, it's really amazing to watch the dialogue and you should be commended for the hard work you do because it's very, 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 very well done and well thought out. And there's a lot of tactical issues. I mean, and people, sometimes we forget about what a tremendous county, Palm Beach County is, one of the largest counties in the United States, west of the Mississippi. And there's a lot going on and staff does a tremendous job. So, thank you again.
Any other comments from my fellow Commissioners? Yes, Lori?
I have a question of staff. Tuesday, this past Tuesday, we had some major discussions on the issues in the agricultural reserve with a, with a potential development on Lyons Road just north of the marketplace. And out of that, those discussions, there was direction for workshop on two things, I believe, on easements all throughout the county and also on that particular project, which is, it has a potential of coming up in front of the Planning Commission, I am sure, right? Because that's a, it's all about text amendment. So, I was wondering if we're going to get any direction because if we, we'll, I'll be attending those workshops for sure. But will, what is your plan for this commission to obtain some information before any text amendments like that come forward?
I think we're at the point right now, we're still just trying to digest the amount of requests that we've been asked to do before we can even come back with anything. The minute we have something a little bit more concrete after talking to the county administration, then we'd be able to present something and get, start getting some more feedback prior to any of these types of workshops.
Okay, then what I'll suggest to you is that when you do get all your, everything straight and, ducks in a row, I hate to say that. I don't like to use trite phrases. I went to Rutgers. I'm not taught that way. I don't use trite phrases normally. But once you do get that together, can we, I suggest that we have a workshop on that also. The way the Commissioner is going to have it, we have something and it could be part of one of our agendas or something just to give the commission here the understanding of easements in the county and...
Right. Let me get to staff and admin and we can try and figure something out, you know...
I'm just a little confused. When you say "we" had a conversation on Tuesday, who was "we"?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Was it, how was it any conversation?
The Board of County Commissioners.
Oh, okay.
Had a meeting.
Collectively.
All right. It's good, I don't need any more. I probably missed a meeting.
And a few of us did go there and we spoke because it was a potential, it was board direction to the planning staff.
I got it, thank you. I just want to apologize to my colleagues. I will miss the next month's meeting. I have a medical process I got to deal with. So, I apologize.
Send the bagels in advance.
But I was just saying, I was just saying, But I was just saying, I was just saying, and I had just organized a bagel program, so Stephanie, please--
Get all the bagels and then not be here.
Please get the bagels and the coffee, send me the bill, okay? Thank you.
Any comments from the executive director? Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
We started running from there to there.
Oh, I didn't see any hands go up, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
How could I not thank staff for yet another wonderful year in consideration and real kindness when there have been questions and concerns? And that includes those people sitting in front of me and the planning director who's not at the seat today, and nice to see you, and the county attorney, thank you very much for some clarification. And to everyone, just good holidays, sincerely. And yes, the BCC meetings are, Jay, if you, fellow commissioner, if you ever have an opportunity to either attend or watch, they are instructive, as was today's discussion. So, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you for allowing us to have what I consider a very full discussion. I learned something from every fellow commissioner today, and it helped me formulate my opinion. So thank you all.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? No? Don't want to get, don't want to do that? Kylie? Yes?
I would just like to say bravo on proper parliamentary procedure reinforcement from the county staff, from a coach of parliamentary procedure at a local high school. I will be inviting staff to volunteer some time. And bravo also to all of you on the time that you spend to help keep us informed and keep the county moving in a very informed and positive track. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anything, Ramsey?
Yes, just to wish everyone happy holidays, and I appreciate Mr. Gromen's comments about staff. Yes, we do have excellent staff, and what you see here is just a handful. We have 375 members of PCB that managed to put this massive machine together and keep it going. So I just want to thank all of my staff, all 370-plus that, you know, keep us going, keep us moving forward. So thank you, everyone, and to my staff. Everyone have a happy holiday.
Thank you. And from our attorney?
Yeah, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and that's it.
And last but not least, from the planning director?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Staff has been talked about, but planning commission, I don't think, has not to this point. So we want to thank you for volunteering your time. It's definitely of a great value to the county, so thank you for volunteering. Happy holidays to everybody, and our next meeting is next year, January 13, 2023.
And just, just so we know what we're getting into, any idea what the agenda looks like yet?
It'll be a busy year. I anticipate it.
No doubt. Is there a pack of lunch?
Well, maybe we'll be bringing some bagels, as Mr. Nisberg suggested, so--
See, this is a perfect example of how one item on the agenda doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a fast item, you know? But, you know, it is what it is, you know? Everything requires, it's, you know, the due attention of it. So having said that, motion to adjourn shall be entertained.
Okay.
Boy, look at those hands go up. All right, happy holidays, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you for indulging me today.